I'd like to call the order that June 9, 2021, public meeting of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is David Weiner, act as the Chair. Before we get started, I've asked Mr. Costin to lead us in prayer, Mr. Horsley on the pledge. Please stand.
Lord, Thou hast been our dwelling place in all generations. Before the mountains were brought forth, forever Thou had formed the earth and the world, even from everlasting to everlasting, Your God. Lord, we come today to say thank You for Your many blessings. God, we thank You for Your leadership. We thank You for Your direction. God, we thank You for each leader in this city and every worker. Now, Father, we ask that You would look on us as we come to conduct business, that You would give us Your guidance and Your wisdom, that we may make proper decisions for this city. We thank You. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join with the flag.
To the flag of the United States.
Thank you. Next, I ask Mr. Redmond to introduce the members, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to. We have a number of, unfortunately, we have a number of our members who are not here today, Mr. Barnes, Ms. Klein, and Ms. Oliver, so we won't dwell on those because we want to get right to George. George Alcaraz represents the Beach District. He's a businessman. He has a number of different kinds of businesses, and he also puts on a number of events and had a very successful recent surfing competition at the pier, which, congratulations, Mr. Alcaraz. Mr. Horsley, seated next to him, is a farmer. He serves at large, but he basically knows everyone in the entire Princess Andrew district as well, and he's a hokey. Next to him, Mr. Weiner, David Weiner, is our chairman. He represents the Kempsville District. He is a commercial salesman in the building industry. Jack Wall is an engineer. He represents the Rose Hall. Did I say you're our chairman?
Mm-hmm.
He's the chairman of the commission. Jack Wall is our vice chairman. He is an engineer, and he represents the Rose Hall District. Mike Inman is an attorney, and he serves at large. He's the smartest guy here. Saxley Donner, Mike typically, is one of the smartest, depending on the day, how they woke up that morning. My name's Dave Redmond. I am a, I represent the Bayside District. I'm a commercial real estate broker licensed in Virginia and North Carolina. And seated next to me is Mr. John Costin. He is a retired fire chief.
Chief.
Captain. Thank you. I slighted you. Apologies. And he also serves at large. We have a number of staff people in attendance today. They are ably led by Mr. Bobby Tahan, the planning director, and he's going to take a second and introduce a few members of his staff. Mr. Tahan.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. With us today, we have Kevin Kemp, our zoning administrator, who unfortunately, this is his last planning commission public hearing. We do thank him very much for all his dedication to the city. With him on the table behind me, we have Hank Morrison, who's one of our planners, Wadaw, our current planning manager or planning evaluation coordinator, Marshall Coleman, one of our current planners that leads, helps lead his team. Along, we have Kay Wilson, our deputy city attorney for land use, Pamela Sandloop, clerking for us today. Again, also Kevin Fairley with IT. Thank you very much, Kevin, for continuing to support us through with the online presence. Tori Eisenberg, city attorney, assisting us as well, amongst many other staff who are sprinkled out through the.
Well, and I'm going to go off script here and say, because we have a couple new interns, I think, and we're making all these introductions, it seems to be appropriate to introduce the interns who are going to be helping us out this summer, one of whom is putting her head down because she didn't want me to do that, but all that as it may.
It's funny, because I need to be introduced to the interns as well, because they just show up, and I don't have all their names, unfortunately, so. We have Grace Pullen with us, who's interning. Grace, can you come and raise your hand? You were introduced to her last month. And Madison Lowman, who is also interning with us. We're very thankful for them. We will keep them engaged with many projects that we have as our cup continues to spill over, as we continue to have more projects as we help the city move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, ladies. Have a great summer. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, next, Madam Clerk, would you please explain the rules of how we proceed today?
Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. We will recognize in-person speakers first, calling the first speaker up and up to three additional speakers to avoid any unnecessary delay between. After all in-person speakers have been called, I will then recognize the speakers participating via WebEx. In all instances, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first, whether they are in person or participating via WebEx. All other speakers will be recognized as previously stated. Speakers participating via WebEx, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid unnecessary background noise and the possibility of echoing and reverberation. It's important that, once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin to ensure the commission hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Also, please do not ask if you can hear me, as only one feed is open at a time to minimize echo and reverberation, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. Again, speakers will be recognized in the order they registered. Please note, if a speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the speaker's comments unintelligible, I will move to the next registered speaker. Commissioners, are there any questions about the process for speakers? Hearing none, I will now proceed to the public hearing rules. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It's important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. The commission requests, if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the planning commission agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. With withdrawals and deferrals, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda. Second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the planning commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note, the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. Commission, thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next order of business are deferral items. Items number 15, 16, 17, and 18 are being deferred, but we do have speakers on those items. So we're going to bring up the speakers first, let them talk before we move into the deferral part. So, Madam Clerk, if you'd like to start calling them, please.
Okay. We have Ken Zenzel, followed by John Farr and Danny Murphy. Phil Rouse, Mike Wills, Andrina Fisher. Cole Trower, Dr. Carley Swift. We had one person signed up for WebEx that does not appear to be online. That is Susan Lawson. Okay, and I believe we have one speaker in person, Mr. George Brickhouse.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name for the record.
George Brickhouse. The Marlin, I'm opposed to the MP Shores project at Marlin Bay. I believe all the other speakers have just pulled out, just because it was requested to be deferred. Since I was here, I wanted to let the commission know that, you know, the citizens are following this carefully. We intend to follow through and request that you would please consider that the Bayfront Advisory Commission has continually agreed and decided not to approve this project. So consider that in the future, please, and that this project is in contrast to the city's guidance for the Shore Drive Corridor and the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No more speakers.
No more speakers. Okay. Now, if you have an item to be deferred, please come forward.
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy, local zoning attorney, and this may be a little bit redundant. I'm here on behalf of JTR LLC and MP Shore, and we are requesting a 30-day deferral of agenda items 15, 16, 17, and 18. And when we requested the deferral, we made sure to reach out to the Ocean Park Civic League and Shore Drive Community Coalition, and we'll continue to keep them involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items to be deferred? Okay, the chair is aware of items, I'm just going to go through this, items one for 30 days, item two for 30 days, item three for 30 days, item 10 for 30 days, items, item 12 for 30 days, item 23 for 30 days, and items 32 through 36 indefinite deferral. Can I have a motion? I'm sorry. Well, she already came and did that. 18, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, 22, 22 for 30 days, 23 for 30 days. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Redmond.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I am making the following declaration. I am abstaining from the vote on deferring agenda item number 10, as I have a conflict on that application, which I will explain more fully when we actually hear it. I have a letter on file with the city attorney's office.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to make some disclosures, having talked to the city attorney about the matter that I should go ahead and do all these disclosures before we vote on anything. So pursuant to the Conflicts of Interest Act, let me first say that as to items that are being financed by Town Bank, which there are four, number 13, 14, 20, 21, and 29, I serve on an advisory board for Town Bank, which does not consider loans and/or approve loans. However, I'm disclosing my membership in that advisory board, and I believe I can participate in the decisions here today fairly and objectively and in the public interest. That's number one. Next, I'm disclosing that as to items 20, 21, Pembroke Square Associates, my law firm represents the developer of the property and some of its principles, but I do not represent anyone on this project. And therefore, since I have no financial interest in the matter and have made this disclosure, I feel I can participate objectively, fairly, and in the public interest. Last but not least, as to items 15, 16, 17, 18, MP Shore LLC, I represent one of the developers of the property, Terry Peterson, but I do not have anything to do with this particular project, and I have no financial interest in it, and I'm making this disclosure and feel that I can fairly and objectively decide, make the decision in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Inman. All right, can I get a motion on the deferred items, please?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we defer agenda items number one, two, three, 10, 12, 15, and 16, 17, and 18, and 22 and 23.
For 30 days?
For 30 days, a 30-day deferral, yes.
And then 32 through 36 for indefinite.
I'm sorry?
32 through 36 for indefinite.
Oh, and 32 through 36 for an indefinite deferral. Thank you.
Have a motion, have a second? Have a motion by Mr. Wall, and a second by Mr. Horsley. Ready to vote?
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent. Ms. Oliver is absent. Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of seven in favor and zero against, agenda items one, two, three, 12, 15, and 16, 17, and 18, 22, and 23 have been deferred for 30 days. Agenda items 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36 have been deferred indefinitely, and by a vote of six in favor, zero against, with one abstention, agenda item number 10 has been deferred for 30 days.
Great. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda, and Vice Chair Wall will take over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff, and the planning commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. We have 12 items on the consent agenda today. The first item is being read together. It is agenda item four and five, DHW Joint Venture LLC, a street closure for 15-foot street dedication, and a street closure for 20-foot private road. It's located in the Bayside District. Is there a representative for this item?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Wall. Chairman, members of the commission, Eddie Bradon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the applicant. We appreciate this item being placed on the consent agenda. All the conditions as recommended by staff are acceptable to my clients, and appreciate Marshall's good work on this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Redmond to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. The applicant is seeking to close a 397.84 square foot area shown on a 1969 platte as 15-foot dedicated to City of Virginia Beach for road purposes, and a 20-foot private road established by a 1924 platte, the private road. Both areas are adjacent to parcels that were rezoned on July 11, 2017, from R5D Residential Duplex District to Conditional A36 Apartment District to develop the Burton Station Apartments. This is what we call a housekeeping matter. This small road will be closed to clear up a title issue and allow the project to be moved forward. And then, financial consideration between the applicant and the city will happen just 397 feet, so it's not going to be a lot of money, but they'll work that out privately between themselves. There is no opposition. There's really nothing substantive about it beyond that, and the commission therefore places it on consent. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is agenda item number six, John's Garage LLC is the applicant. 5772 Arrowhead LLC is the property owner. They're requesting a conditional use permit for an automotive repair garage located in the Kempsville District. Is there a representative to speak on this item?
I'm John Sweeney.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Inman to read this into the record.
Thank you. This is, as stated, a conditional use permit application located at 5772 Arrowhead Drive in Suites A and B. It is currently zoned industrial warehouse and I-1 light industrial, and its surrounding properties are similarly zoned. The automotive repair garage, which occupies two suites within the industrial warehouse, has total floor area of 3,420 square feet. The auto repair business provides engine repair, oil changes, tire service, brakes, and state inspections. While the Newtown Strategic Growth Area Master Plan calls for a long-term redevelopment of this area into a series of mixed-use developments, the staff views that the proposed use is compatible with the existing light industrial uses surrounding the site. Auto repair uses have existed within this area for decades, and as such, the proposed use is acceptable until the market forces the transition of this area to the long-term vision established in the Newtown SGA plan. No site improvements or changes to the building are proposed with this request, and parking on-site meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. In consideration of these things, the staff put it on the, recommends approval, and we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Inman. The next item on the agenda is agenda item number seven, Then Brew Line Brewing Company is the applicant. Oceana Crossing LLC is the property owner. It's a, they're requesting modification of conditions for craft brewery and open-air market. It's located in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this item? Okay. Seeing none, is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, we've asked Mr. Alcaraz to read this into the record.
Thank you. Excuse me. The applicant is requesting a modification of conditions from a December 12, 2018 city council conditional use permit for a craft brewery and open-air market in the shopping center along Oceana Boulevard Zone, Conditional B2, and Community Business District. The conditional use permit for the craft brewery was specific to unit 124, and the open-air market was permitted to allow food truck within the parking lot of the shopping center. The applicant is seeking to expand the brewery to the adjacent unit, unit 122. The expansion of the business will allow for additional 1,600 square feet to accommodate customers and staff. No changes to the exterior of the building or signage as proposed. The operational hours are still the same. All conditions attached to the conditional use permit in 2018 shall remain in effect, and with the conditions stated, as I just mentioned, everything's still in effect. The planning commission is recommended for consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Commonwealth Auto Group as the applicant, and WWMD Properties LP as the property owner, requesting conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and rentals. It's located in the Bayside District. Is there an applicant? Is there a representative for this item?
I'm Joe Anthony Ramone. I'm the dealer operator for Commonwealth Auto Group. I'm also the state vice president of the Virginia Independent Auto Dealers Association.
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, they are acceptable. The pavement in the front is roughly 25,000 feet. Just wanted to notate that as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda?
You're good. Thank you.
Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Redmond to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. This is an application for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales at 4873 Haygood Road. This application first came before us a month ago. It was deferred. We had some suggestions for improvements to the property and to the application itself. I want to thank and commend the applicant. They responded very well to our requests and improved the application and the treatment of this property, such that I now believe, and the commission agrees, that it is appropriate to be placed on consent. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Okay, thank you. The next item is agenda item number nine, Ocean Rental Properties LLC is the applicant. Ocean Rental Properties LLC, Robert Arthur Jr., and Margaret Bird Perkins, and Thomas J. Schwartz, and Colleen Hurley Schwartz are the property owners. The application is for a street closure, and it is located in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman Wall, members of the commission for the record, Eddie Bradon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the applicants. We appreciate being on the consent agenda. All 11 conditions, which sets a record for a street closure, are acceptable. Appreciate Wadaw's work on this. It is, it was, it's a complicated set of facts, and it deserves the 11 conditions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the commission has asked Mr. Alcaraz to read this into the record.
All right, thank you again. Again, this applicant is requesting a street closure. On October 20, 2020, city council approved for conditional use permits for the short-term rentals at 516 Norfolk Avenue. The condition of the approval was to seek a street closure request for the unimproved portion of the right-of-way in front of 516 and 518 Norfolk Avenue to improve and provide parking on the subject property and not within the Norfolk Avenue right-of-way. As such, the applicant is following through on that request and is working with the adjacent property owners for the street closure, and for that reason, we're putting on consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. The next application on the agenda is agenda item number 13, Atherton Construction and Development Incorporated is the applicant. The Open Door Chapel Incorporated is the property owner.
Mr. Wall, we have the representative as WebEx for Atherton.
Mm-hmm. Can?
Okay. I'm calling Troy Parker. Did I skip? Did I do something wrong? No, we're good, okay. Troy Parker's the representative. He is on WebEx. Mr. Parker, if you would please pause two to three seconds, state your name, and then please begin your comments.
Yes, hello. This is Troy Parker, here representing Atherton Construction Development, here to answer any questions concerning the proposed change in use on some property that we're purchasing from the church to complete approximately 25,000 square foot development in front of
Are the two conditions acceptable?
Yes.
Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Horsley to read this into the record.
Thank you. Vice Chairman.
That's better, I guess. In 1978, a conditional use permit was approved by city council for religious use on a 7.12 acre parcel. In January of this year, a modification of conditions to that conditional use permit was granted by city council to remove 0.58 acres from that use permit to use for parking for a retail development next door to the north. Now, they're asking to remove 1.7 acres from that use permit to provide additional parking for that retail development. Staff has looked at this. The church still has plenty of acreage for parking, plenty of parking left, so they thought it was fine to do that. So there wasn't any opposition, so we decided to place it on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horsley. The next item on the consent agenda is agenda item number 19, 3323 Shore Drive LLC, requesting conditional use permit for commercial marina. It's located in the Lynn Haven District. Is there a representative for this item?
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Fadure, representing the applicant and the property owner for the item 19, and we will take it as it stands with the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any questions, if you need. Thank you.
Are the two conditions acceptable?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Very much so.
Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Costin to read this into the record.
The applicant is proposing to construct two docks, each adjacent to the existing Bubbles Seafood and Shellfish Company restaurants, to accommodate birthing personal watercraft of restaurant customers. The proposed dock for Bubbles will be approximately 12 feet wide by 75 feet long. The proposed dock for Shellfish The proposed dock for Shellfish Company will be approximately 12 feet wide by 55 feet long. Timber stairs will be provided to access, access the restaurants from each dock. A joint permit was submitted to construct the proposed dock at Bubbles Seafood Restaurant on April 7, 2020. A joint permit application was submitted to construct the proposed dock at Shellfish Company on May 5, 2020. The waterfront permit is pending the approval of the conditional use permit. The staff recommended approval and the planning commission concurs, therefore we've just placed this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, is number 20. Pembroke Square Associates LLC. They're both the applicant and the property owner. Is there a representative for this item?
Thank you, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney representing Pembroke Square Associates on item number 20 as well as item number 21. Item number 20 is a conditional rezoning, so obviously we agree with our properies. We appreciate being on the consent agenda. I want to take just a second to thank Ashby Moss and Director Bobby Tahan for their work with us on this application. And I also would want to let the commission know, another, two records in one, one meeting. The public outreach on this, they had a, we had a outreach that had YouTube TV, I think it was, over 400 people, either the 30 or so that attended in person or on TV because they could monitor how many people were watching homes. Over 400 people reviewed this with us about six weeks ago, which, that's, that's a lot of people for a public outreach meeting. Appreciate all of everybody's assistance with this.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition for this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Redmond to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Agenda items number 20 and 21 do two things. One is a conditional rezoning from B3 Central Business District to Conditional CBC Central Business Core District. It's a very complex application. I would urge you to read it. It's, we would be here for another 45 minutes if you asked me to do all that. This is the purpose for which we had a Pembroke Area Strategic Growth Area Plan and subsequently revised the zoning ordinances and, and created new zoning categories, was to encourage this type of development at this site and others within the Pembroke SGA. The second part of this application is a conditional use permit for a senior housing facility. You can see the renderings here before us. It is, it is well-designed. It's attractive. It fits well on that corner of, of Gene Street and Constitution Drive. It certainly will be, it will fit well within the, within this district and I think provide another option for our citizens to live. Everybody knows there's an enormous shortage of housing in our city and frankly throughout the United States. The applicant was receptive to some changes to the design of this building that I think enhanced it, and I'm sure it will be a credit to this neighborhood, to this district and to our city as a whole. Therefore, the, the commission views that this is quite appropriate for consent and we look forward to its, its development and all its contributions and other contributions to come. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Okay, thank you. So, these are, these are two applications. The first one was application, agenda item number 20, which for, was for conditional rezoning for B3 Central Business to Conditional CBC Central Business. And Mr. Redmond just, you know, read that into the record. Now, for agenda item number 21, it's Pembroke Square Associates LLC is the applicant, property owner, for conditional use permit for housing for seniors. Are the two conditions acceptable? Okay, thank you.
Yes, well, they're acceptable to the client.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? And Mr. Redmond, I believe, read that one, you know, as well and combined them together. So, okay, thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is agenda item number 24. Marie Strom is the applicant and Aloha LLC is the property owner for a conditional use permit, Tattoo Parlor, located in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this, for this item?
Hi, yes, I'm Marie Strom.
Thank you.
Owner of Porcelan.
Okay. Are the three conditions acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Costin to read this into the record.
The applicant is requesting to operate a tattoo parlor to offer microblading services within an existing salon and spa in a shopping center along North Bird Neck Road, south of Laskin Road. The site is zoned B2 Community Business, which permits tattoo parlors with a conditional use permit. The applicant seeks to offer microblading services, a semi-permanent makeup technique within a 182 square foot space inside the salon. Hours of operation are proposed as 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM by appointment only, seven days a week. No exterior changes are proposed to the building. The staff has recommended approval and the commission concurs.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the, the consent agenda is agenda item number 25. DOZB LLC, as both the applicant and the property owner, for alternative compliance. This application is located in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this item?
Again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney representing DOZB. All eight conditions as recommended by Mr. Morrison, including the revised condition regarding the bike, bike parking that he reviewed in the informal, are acceptable to my clients. There, I'm not sure if the disclosure included disclosure of our, my representation, we'll get that straight between here and City Council, and appreciate being on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition for this application to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Mr. Edman to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. This property is located at 821, 823 and 825 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and the existing land use is mostly vacant, but with a single family dwelling on part of it. Surrounding it is a mixed use of land uses, and it happens to be across the street from the precinct station on Virginia Beach Boulevard. The proposal is to develop what's called the shipyard at 17th Street, which is a craft brewery, tasting room, restaurant with extensive outdoor area for use as a beer garden on Virginia Beach Boulevard. The proposed structures on the site do not meet the Build 2 requirements of the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code, and the applicant requests alternative compliance to proceed. Build 2 requirements have to do with setback from the street. So, the applicant has requested that the proposed structures should be placed outside the Build 2 zones for mixed-use buildings along the gateway frontage, which requires 60% of the building frontage to be five to 15 feet from the right-of-way. And currently, there is an 800 square foot cottage from 1935 on the property that's set for demolition. The, and in its place, a 1,183 square foot restaurant with limited seating and takeaway options is proposed. Directly south of the restaurant, a connected, connected by a hallway, an 1,842 square feet craft brewery with a tasting room and a 1,200 square foot rooftop patio is proposed. The applicant's requesting reduced parking due to pedestrian nature of the Oceanfront Resort District and the site's proximity to public transit and large public venues such as the Sports Center and Virginia Beach Convention Center. The site is also only .2 miles from the Vibe District, another walkable, pedestrian, pedestrian-oriented area with ample street parking. So, in conclusion, the recommendation and evaluation by the staff is that the Form-Based Code provides flexibility through the alternative compliance process to accommodate unique uses and development forms that contribute to the character and ambiance envisioned in the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan, but do not follow the prescribed form as written. Section 7.33 of the Form-Based Code provides review standards for these applications, noting that council shall consider the extent to which the proposed development, taken as a whole, satisfies these standards. Having considered all these recommendations, we decided to put it on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. That was the last item on the, on the regular consent agenda. The planning commission also places the following applications for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda as they meet the applicable requirements for Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance. Staff and the planning commission supports the applications, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. These include agenda item number 28, Dan and Sarah Bailey. Agenda item number 31, Krista L. Woodlock. Application number 37, Standard Community LLC. Number 38, William Giorgio. And number 39, Andrew Boils, Broyles. Those were the last items on the short-term rental consent agenda. I move for approval of, of the following consent agenda items. Agenda item number four, DHW Joint Venture. Okay, just read the numbers. Number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 13, 19, 20, 21, 24, and 25, as well as the short-term rental applications. Number 28, 31, 37, 38, and 39.
You have a motion by Mr. Wall. Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Wall, second by Mr. Alcaraz. Ready to vote?
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent. Ms. Oliver is absent. Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of seven favor and zero against, agenda items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 13, 19, 20, 21, 24, 25, 28, 31, 37, 38, and 39 have been recommended for approval by consent.
Thank you. Thank you for those who had items on a consent agenda that will now be scheduled for City Council. Now, we will move forward to the regular agenda.
Our first item on the regular agenda is item number 11. Green Clean Auto Wash, an application for a conditional use permit, car wash facility on property located at 3112 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Lynn Haven District. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present? And if so, please step to the podium.
Afternoon, Chairman Weiner, Vice Chair Wall, members of the planning commission. For the record, I'm Randy Royal with Kelly Horn and Associates, here to represent this project, Green Clean Car Wash. Property zone B2, we need a use permit for the car wash. Currently, or previously, it had a bank operating and auto storage on there. We've worked with staff extensively. I don't think there's any problems. It's a nice-looking building, modern-style building. We took advantage of the setbacks to move it from 35 feet to 19 feet for a lot of reasons, to kind of match the SGA, give it more of the urban look, to shield the parking from the passersby, and to get as far away from the residences as we could, the residents at the back of the property. We've got extensive landscaping. We've got more landscaping than is required and planning things bigger. Again, working with staff, trying to come up with a, a nice project here. We have spoken to Steve Nimitz, who's the president of the Kings Grant Civic League. He had no opposition. There are three houses adjacent to the property, and we got one of them, Ed Stoll, who responded. We sent certified letters, but we talked to Ed and he had no problem with it. The site itself has five access points on it, very bad for traffic engineering. We've reduced that to two, and the one on Virginia Beach Boulevard, where previously were three, there's one entrance and it's only a, an inbound, an ingress entrance. So, we've helped the traffic situation there. But I heard you at the pre-briefing this morning, and we probably didn't look at that close enough, but we certainly have now as far as the noise. Mr. Wall had a concern, I'm sure all of you do, and I've got a couple of ideas that I'd like to add for stipulations, and then I'll kind of walk through how I think that helps. I've spoke to, spoken to Mr. Dow about it. But number one would be to put noise attenuators on the air blowers at the end of the tunnel, if you will. Number two, there's not a pointer up here, is there? So, if you look at the right side of the building and, no, no, you're good, stay up there with that site plan, please. Thank you. So, the wall, we would extend the wall on the top side there to further attenuate the no, thank you, perfect. Up, up on the edge there, yeah, we would extend it down a little bit, yeah, like that, which is, and I'll explain to you in a minute how that's going to help the numbers in there. So, we'd like to propose those as two additional stipulations. And the rationale, and, and Mr. Wall, I heard you this morning, I went by and looked at the one at Edwin and Independence, and for one thing, the dryers on that particular unit are right at the edge. Makes a difference. I mean, they're, they're not inbound whatsoever. I'm not saying that ours isn't loud, too, but ours are maybe eight feet in or so, so you lose some there, lose some decibel levels. So, 25 feet from the dryers, you should be hearing about 70 to 75 decibels. With the attenuators, we should drop that about 10. That gets us to 60 to 65. With the additional wall, that should get us another five to 10 decibels. Getting all the way to the back there, which is about 130 feet to the closest residence, that's another five to 10 decibels. That gets us down to probably in the 40 to 50 decibel range, and I got to believe that Virginia Beach Boulevard is 65 decibels there now. So, I get it, I absolutely do, but I think the levels, and of course, it's, it's not a constant noise, it's a small part of the car wash that operates just, just at the end, but it's not a consistent noise 24/7 throughout the day. So, we feel like with that, that to get that down to probably 40 to 50 range, and, and so you'll know, everybody knows the ACUS numbers, but you don't really know what they mean. 60 decibels is considered normal. 60 decibels is me talk, not on the microphone, but me talking five to 10 feet away, a normal conversation, or like an air conditioner unit running. So, it's not bad. It comes on for a short period, dries the cars, but again, the extra that we wanted to offer up, Mr. Wall, to try to mitigate this noise here. I've got the owner here, if you have any specific questions about the car wash itself. He's, he's done them all over Hampton Roads. It's a high-end facility. There are no bays, it's just the tunnel, the automated car wash. Again, thank you, Mr. Dow. We've worked with him extensively on a lot of things on this project to try to make it the best we can. We've improved it further with these noise attenuation. So, we're amenable to the stipulations. We'd like to propose the additional two stipulations for you. Staff has recommended approval. We hope you will do the same to City Council, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Jack?
No, I, and I do appreciate that, because the past applications have come through here and we've approved them, and it can be very impactful to the adjacent property owners. You know, not just an impact, but, you know, life-changing, you know, financial impact as well. So, I appreciate, you know, offering those, the stipulations, those conditions to be added, and, you know, I think, you know, I would like to add those with the acceptance of the rest of the, the planning commission.
Mr. Dow, did you work up some language to add there?
We can, we can work with this and we'll, we'll edit it as we move forward, but we can add a condition number 10, to reduce noise impacts from the car wash and automatic dryers. Noise attenuation shall be installed to reduce the noise from the automatic dryers exiting the car wash, and an additional six-foot wall shall be installed along the exit of the automatic car wash as approved by the director of planning.
Okay. That's good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There's no speakers, correct?
No speakers, sir.
Okay. Jack?
I'm ready to...
I'm ready to make a motion. Okay, I make a motion that we approve. Agenda Item Number 14. Is it 14?
11.
11. 11. Green Clean Auto Wash with the added condition about the noise attenuation.
Do you have a motion for approval? Do you have a second? You have a second by Mr. Horsley. A motion by Mr. Waldo. Second by Mr. Horsley. Ready to vote?
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent. Ms. Oliver is absent. Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of seven in favor, zero against, Agenda Item Number 11 has been recommended for approval with conditions as added.
Before we move to Item 14, I need to abstain from this item. Pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflicts of Interest Act, I make the following declaration. I'm executing a writ disclosure regarding the Planning Commission's discussion and vote for Item Number 14, Beach Building Group, 2332 and 2328 Pleasure House Road, Virginia Beach. The applicant is a client of mine, employee of Batsheldern Collins, 2305 Granby Street, Norfolk, Virginia. And I may have a financial personal interest in this transaction. Therefore, I abstain from this item, and I will step away, and Mr. Wall will take over.
Okay.
Okay.
Next agenda item is Agenda Item Number 14, Beach Building Group Incorporated, an application for a conditional change of zoning, R 7.5 Residential District to conditional A 18 Apartment District on property located at 2332 and 2328 Pleasure House Road in the Bayside District.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Commission for the Record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Beach Building Group, Inc. Mr. Jonathan Spate, Principal of Beach Building Group, Inc., is with us this afternoon. This is an assemblage of three parcels of property that's been put together at the 2332 and 2328 Pleasure House Road. Subject property abuts the Windsong Apartments, which have a density that's greater than is proposed on this property and has been approved for an even greater density. This is a conditional rezoning to develop a eight-unit condominium for sale units, not apartments. They're very attractive, high-quality units. The Bayfront Advisory Commission, which recommended approval of this without any negative votes whatsoever, their design committee, we worked with them, made some modifications and enhancements to the architectural elevations of the units. They were very, very pleased with the end product. As I said, the density is 13.79 units per acre. That's the density. The A 18 is just for lot coverage. So, it's more than four units below A 18 density. We have a total of 16 outside parking spaces and 16 garage parking spaces on site. So, it's four for each unit. Plenty of parking. One access to Pleasure House Road. We've got, with the Windsong Apartment redevelopment, they will be putting extensive landscaping and fencing along our eastern boundary and our southern boundary. We are landscaping the street frontage as well as the northern boundary, where we are adjacent to a single-family dwelling, but that is a part of the Windsong complex. The staff, while did a great job working with us, and has recommended approval of the application. The number of units, as I say, are less than what is around us. This would have made perfectly good sense as a rezoning with Windsong as it currently is. The redevelopment that's going to take place is at a much higher density than is currently there. When that rezoning was going forward, it's my understanding that the Chesapeake Beach Civic League, which is not taking a position opposed to this, and they've been advised of this, and the plans were provided to them initially and then after they were revised, they had indicated, I believe, that they, if Windsong had redeveloped at 18 units per acre, they had been, you know, they would not have had any opposition. And again, this is at 13.79 units per acre for sale units, not apartments. We've proffered that the units cannot be rented for any period less than 30 days. And when you do a year lease or whatever, you know, you're still going to have people carry over it month to month. So, that's the reason for the 30 days. But that's in here, that it will be a condominium, and the units will be for sale. Be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Mr. Wall, we have one speaker, and she is via WebEx. Kim Mayo, if you would wait two to three seconds, and then state your name, and please start your comments.
Hello? Is my voice okay?
Please begin your comments.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you. This is Kim Mayo. I'm at Secure Court, which is directly across the street from 2332 Pleasure House Road. I want to welcome the new Planning Council members. I will be speaking today briefly in opposition to this proposal. It's only half an acre, and they want to cram eight units in there. It's currently zoned for residential, 7.5, not A 18 Apartment District. They'll do very well in this market, just selling as is. No need to pose a risk to others by changing zoning. Two wrongs don't make a right, and 30-day rental sounds pretty short-term to me as well. The city of Virginia Beach, including Planning Council, is required to adhere to the comprehensive plan last updated May 17, 2016, with regards to zoning determinations. Comprehensive plan was unfortunately ignored on both Windsong and Westminster, and the results were a lawsuit against our great city and against developers by the abutters. The fact that these ever got approved is really troubling and embarrassing. Residents deserve to be respected, and this plan should be followed. Nobody wants these lawsuits. And I also stand with area residents and the OP on opposition to Marlin Bay. Concerns about Pleasure House Road echoed during Windsong hearings are not minor. They include flooding. I've personally witnessed the area surrounding 2332 Pleasure House Road flood, and flood badly many, many times. The project puts lives at danger, lives in danger with increased traffic as a result of the greater residential density. Too many close calls with pedestrians, bicyclists, moms with baby strollers on Pleasure House Road. And also, there are concerns about decreased property values during the construction period. There would be a lot of noise, vibrations, odors, construction debris, and reduced air quality for those with asthma, for both this project and Windsong. Again, in conclusion, we ask that you follow the comprehensive plan. Thank you so much for your time. I'll take my comments off the air.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. Does the applicant want to rebut?
I do have a couple of things I'd like to point out. The first is that, as staff has recommended, this is exactly in accordance with our comprehensive plan, and that's why it's being recommended. It's also why it's being recommended by the Shore Drive Advisory Commission. The other thing that I'd point out is that directly across the street where Ms. Mayo resides on Secure Court, that property is zoned A 18. There are nine units on it, and I don't know that it has any more land than this property has on it. May have a slight amount more, but it's a fraction. It's not, they don't have anywhere near an acre either. Same zoning, same density, probably higher density than what this application involves. So, it's a, and the 30 days is just a minimum. If somebody, they're for sale, but if somebody rents out their unit, it will not be a short-term rental by restriction. That's the point. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Burdon?
Just one. Mr. Burdon, your client already established or started the stormwater plan and go to the extent of that?
Yeah, they begun that, but in this part of the city, we don't have to do the same level at, before coming for entitlement. Because on a project of this, of this size, to spend those tens of thousands of dollars, but yes, this, they will be able to do the, using filteras under the parking areas and the drive aisle, they'll be able to meet the requirements. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right. I'm going to open the floor for discussion. Mr. Redmond?
Thank you, Mr. Wall. This, well, first off, I support this application. Looks to me to be a very appropriate application. I like the design. The site plan seems to be well-thawed out. I would only, I have no doubt whatsoever that with regard to stormwater, it'll be nothing but an improvement, because he's already told us what the measures would be. And I think everybody has to remember, number one, Virginia Beach has the most stringent stormwater regulations in the Commonwealth of Virginia. If we looked at it, probably be a whole bunch of other states nearby us, but it's us. And there is not an application that is ever going to get through site plan review in this environment that's fall short of the standards that we've set. So, I'm comfortable with the stormwater, not just that it won't be a problem, but that it'll be an improvement to the site, because it's far more modern and more intense than it's ever been on the site before. And I also would point out, at 13 units to acre, there are hundreds of units in this neighborhood that are a density higher than 13 units to the acre. You can drive down Shore Drive and see three-story apartment complexes in very, very close proximity to this that are far, that are denser than this. I think this is a fine use of this property. It's well landscaped, and I particularly like the design of the buildings. I think it's a very high-quality design. I'll bet you they sell quick. I bet you it'll be very nice places to live. So, anyway, I will support it. Thanks.
Mr. Edman?
Yeah, I certainly agree with what David says. This property is surrounded by denser uses. The highest, best use of this property should be a higher density. We're basically only adding six residential units on the site. By doing this, they are very attractive. They've got excellent restrictions that Mr. Burdon referred to that'll be recorded. There won't be any short-term rental in here. And so, I support the application.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yep. Oh, well, I've got a couple of things. One is, you know, I support the application, too. I think it's attractive. I think it does fit the character of the neighborhood and along Pleasure House. I am, so I am going to support it as well. Okay. Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, Mr. Vice Chairman, in his acting capacity as chairman. I move approval of Agenda Item Number 14. I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And I've got a second. So, Mr. Redmond makes a motion to approve. Mr. Edman makes a motion as the second. Call for the vote.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent. Ms. Oliver is absent. Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner is abstaining. By recorded vote of six in favor, zero against, with one abstention, Agenda Item Number 14 has been recommended for approval.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Weiner, do you want me to read 26 and 27 together or individually?
I think we're going to need to do that individually, because one's a short-term rental. Or how would we work that?
Okay.
Can we do them both together, or since it's the same person? If we do it separate, let's do it separate.
Okay.
Is that okay?
The question will end up bleeding over, Mr. Chair. My recommendation is that we read them together.
Read them together. Okay, we're good.
Okay, the next two items are Agenda Items Number 26 and 27. They are both applications from Tracy R. and Michael L. McGlynn. The first, Number 26, being an application for modification of conditions on property located at 523 20th and a Half Street. Item Number 27 is an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental, on property located at 523 20th and a Half Street in the Beach District. The applicant or the applicant's representative, please step to the podium.
Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tracy McGlynn. My husband and I have been living in the subject property for the last year and have absolutely loved living at the beach and in the vibe district. Recently, however, we decided to buy a beach bungalow on 35th Street, but to afford the house, we would have to short-term rent our home on 20th and a Half Street. This was not an easy decision, as we have loved our home and our neighbors. I know many people have concerns about living near a short-term rental. We have discussed concerns with our neighbors that share the lot with us, and after discussions, they support our decision. We will be living on 35th Street, which is only about a mile away, so we can check on guests easily and be a visible presence, which will help defer some of the disruptions of a short-term rental. Even before the Planning Commission added the one rental per week, we were planning on a seven-day Saturday-to-Saturday rental schedule. We will be advertising the home as a great place for a family vacation and really market the home for families. This will minimize the large groups here to party, which we will include in our rules of no parties, and will maintain a visible presence to ensure adherence to these rules. I will, of course, provide my personal contact information to my immediate neighbors, along with a posted sign with the contact information. We have worked to keep our lawn and flower beds in clean and orderly conditions, and I have a lawn service and will continue that service, so our property will not, will not begin to look unkept. Because we will be so close, we will be able to monitor the garbage and recycles and ensure that they are taken out and removed in a clean way. I realize the unregistered short-term rental has, across the street from ours, has caused some concern, but we are working hard to address those types of issues in our home. We do care about our neighbors and their peaceful living, and will do everything we can to ensure our home does not become a nuisance to our neighbors and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, the speaker? Thank you. Mr. Redmond?
I shall take my leave. Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Conflicts of Interest Act and Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3115F, I'm making the following declaration. I have on file with the city attorney a conflicts letter. I abstain from all STR applications and ordinances on this day. That would be Agenda Items Number 26 to 39.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
29 and 30, but that's okay. You're good. You're fine. Okay, speakers?
Yes, sir. We have two, one in person and one WebEx. Sarah Welch.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Welch, and I reside at 522 20th and a Half Street, directly across from the proposed short-term rental. I purchased my home in September of 2018 and made it my permanent home in May of 2019. I stand in opposition to this proposed change request. My rationale for the opposition is there is currently a short-term rental directly to the west side of my home. We've had loud tenants, parking issues, and the lawn has been in disrepair. I submitted photos to Miss Summer Peebles for parking and lawn issues. I believe, based on the code of one parking space per bedroom, there is not ample parking to have two short-term rentals adjacent. Also, the current property does not comply with the, no more than two contracts in the seven consecutive days. I purposely bought this house in this neighborhood, as it was a single-family home area with homeowners in most of the homes. I did not buy in other locations in Virginia Beach due to the high concentration of investor real estate. As a property owner in this small street, basically an alleyway, I'm concerned of the potential for too many investor properties in a half-block situation. I'm also concerned about the potential property value degradation and the safety of our neighborhood with too many homes as investor real estate. If we must have investor real estate on the street, I'm requesting the board provide a density cap to ensure that the neighborhood does not turn into an area where propensity of homes are investors' short-owned rentals. I believe no more than 10- I believe no more than ten to fifteen percent of the homes on a given location should be investor short-term. I respectfully request you take my feedback into consideration as you make your upcoming decisions. Thank you in advance for your time.
Any questions?
Ma'am, just real quick, um, are you aware of three-one-one number? The three-one-one in City Beach?
I am.
Okay, if you have problems with the short-term rentals, you can use that number, three-one-one.
I understand that.
Um, and I don't know, I'm sure Summer's, Summer's good at what she does, and I'm sure she'll look in to see if that's actually, um, a legal short-term rental that you're having problems with.
It's grandfathered.
It's grandfathered, okay. Then use that three-one-one number whenever there's any problems. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Webex, Paula Schiflett. If you would please wait two to three seconds, state your name, and then please begin your comments.
Hi. My name is Paula Schiflett. Am I coming through?
Hear you.
I, I, uh, want to apologize, uh, ahead of time. I had a work thing come up, and I'm not, do not have a written, uh, agenda, but I'll do the best I can. Uh, I need to, I just want to clarify. The, the sign, the zoning sign has been in front of the five twenty-three property on Twentieth Street for whatever the required time is. My understanding or what I'm hearing is, is that it has been, this property has been submitted as five twenty-three and a half street. So could you clarify, uh, for me that property, uh, and its location? Because its front door and its two balconies and parking is, is on Twentieth Street. So, uh, it would be considered a house on Twentieth Street versus five twenty-three and a half? So I'm a little confused about that?
Ma'am, please continue with your comments.
Okay, uh, so, um, the house is facing, uh, Twentieth Street. We live slightly to the east across the street. Uh, just to give you a little background, so that you understand, uh, a little bit about us, is my husband and I have been, uh, residents here for over twenty-one years and actively involved in the community, including raising a child in the Virginia Beach school system, who's currently in a DB Academy. We largely contribute to, through fundraising, most recently to the Virginia Aquarium, building their new sanctuary. We're definitely embedded residents. We're, uh, looking forward to spending, what I can say is, the rest of our life here. In those twenty years, we have, uh, watched a lot of development on this street, mostly single-home residential. We've also encountered, as you know, lots of traffic because we are one of the few through streets from, directly from the beach to, uh, away from the beach after, um, some of the streets were closed off. So we get a lot of foot traffic, uh, from the convention center going to the beach, as well as, uh, traffic and work trucks. And my understanding also is that you are opening up the, uh, you're building the wave pool, et cetera, in the dome area, and so, uh, construction will continue. So with the twenty, twenty-foot wide street and, uh, curbing put in for the new homes, uh, the traffic has been a little more, uh, crowded, as well as stopping, because two cars cannot fit down this road or, uh, work trucks or anything at the same time with the new curbing put in if somebody is actually parked on the street. So my concern is, uh, the traffic. Uh, it's also parking. Uh, there's been several incidences with, uh, parking, uh, for people that are visiting houses that are short-term rentals. So my, um, I am speaking against it, uh, at this point, uh, because we have enjoyed and we continue to enjoy the fact that we are one of-
Thank you very much for your comments, ma'am. Um, that's all.
No more speakers.
Okay. Mrs. McGlynn, is that correct? Would you like to come back up for rebuttal?
My only comment, I think she's con, we were, um, required to put a sign on Twentieth Street and Twentieth and a Half Street. I believe the two houses she's talking about are facing Twentieth Street. My house is on Twentieth and a Half Street. So it looked confusing, but that's the only, that's the only thing I have to add.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I got a question.
Ma'am, hold on one second, sorry.
Sorry, um, are the units A, B, and C, or?
They each have their own home address. They have their own home number.
So the units on Twentieth Street are what?
On Twentieth Street is five twenty-three and five-
Twenty-five? Twenty-one?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. On the map, it shows units A, B, and C, so.
I think that was just for clarity.
Okay, so it's, it's three different, separate addresses?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. No more speakers? All right, we will close this and open up for discussion. Mr. Alcaraz?
I mean, they meet, they, they meet the criteria, everything that's set. They've got the, the parking, and of course, they're in the OR district. And, yeah, I'm, I'm an advocate for OR districts, so, um, I'd like to hear from you guys, but I'm supporting it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Support it too.
Any motion? Do you have any motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this application.
We, we got you two, um, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Oh, twenty-six and twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve twenty-six and twenty-seven.
We have a motion for approval by Mr. Alcaraz. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Costin. We're ready to vote?
Okay, I'm gonna call for item number twenty-six first.
Okay.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent. Ms. Oliver is absent. Mr. Redmond is abstaining. Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of six in favor, zero against with one abstention, agenda item number twenty-six has been recommended for approval. Moving on to item number twenty-seven for the short-term rental application. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent. Ms. Oliver is absent. Mr. Redmond is abstaining. Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of six in favor, zero against with one abstention, agenda item number twenty-seven has been recommended for approval.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I note for the record, when Mr. Redmond left, uh, Mr. Redmond read his disclosure for the, his abstention, he also had left the meeting. So since he is not in the meeting, we don't have to note he is abstaining, but that he is absent.
He's absent, okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Our next item is agenda item number twenty-nine, Catherine Patterson Denton, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental, on property located at thirteen sixteen Cypress Avenue in the Beach District.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Again, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing, um, Catherine Denton, Katie Denton, and Katie and her husband are here. Katie, just a little bit of background, um, she lives at the North End, and she has, um, short-term, some short-term rentals that she, um, owns and manages on the Outer Banks. And she came across this beautiful little bungalow cottage, uh, at the corner of Fourteenth and Cypress that she just purchased. Will had earlier, um, gotten confused on, when he was looking at his records. But Ms. Denton just bought this property. And she and the, the previous owner who sold it to her, um, didn't want to see this property, um, demoed in a, you know, a new two-unit duplex condo get built on it. And it, it's just, it's a, it's a, I think, the perfect type of a, of a dwelling if it's given the, you know, the TLC that it needs, and she's gonna, you know, make some improvements to it, but not change it, not change the, uh, the character of it. Perfect place to do just this type of, um, use of the property. And, and it's a, a way to make that, you know, viable versus a, a tear-down and a, and a rebuild. The, um, meets all the criteria, all the conditions are acceptable. Katie went and talked to the people, um, to the south and to the west, all, all the owners, but all of those are rentals. And the, um, and the owner has no, no objection whatsoever. They're not short-term rentals, they're rental, rental properties, though. Um, and there, there are quite a number of those in, in this area. But the, the reality is, this is, this is a situation where, um, the short-term rental actually can extend the, the life of, of this property that, again, it's perfect. Parking, you know, works perfectly. And Katie is very meticulous in screening, uh, the, the renters for her places, and she's here on behalf of it. She'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have, but she will be hands-on as far as management. She's got a, uh, has had a website for some time, um, and if you go to it, it's, it's quite impressive. She does this very professionally, um, very high-quality, and she has five-star reviews across the board for the people who come, uh, and stay in her other short-term rentals, which are on the Outer Banks. And she wants to do the same thing with this piece of property because it's a, it's a perfect property to do it on, given it's the quality of the, of the house that's on it and how you, you know, it's, if you go, look, look around, it's, there are some still left, but there aren't a lot of these old beach bungalows left. Be happy to answer any questions. Katie's here, be happy to answer any questions if you have any of her about how she operates her short-term rentals.
Questions? Let's listen to speakers. Thank you.
We have one speaker, Ben Harrison.
Hello, I'm Ben Harrison. I live directly across the street or next to the house, requesting permission for this mini hotel, which will have no onsite supervision or management, if you allow it. I'm glad they've spoken with some of the renters, but my neighbors and I, who own single-family homes, view this as an invitation, excuse me, an uninvited incursion by unknown vacationing-type people and other itinerants into our peaceful neighborhood. If you allow this to occur, um, their cars will be cramped into our little street, possibly blocking driveways. Their music and parties may not be quite loud enough, quite late enough to force us to call the cops, but we'll remain on edge and always a few seconds away from dialing nine-one-one, wasting our resources because of the actions you may take today. Late-night parties, pumping bass music, screaming fights in the yard, toddlers meandering aimlessly, animals running off leashes, people knocking on our doors, guys are lost. Appearances by the police are all foreseeable, yet avoidable by you. Short-term renters do not have respect for the neighborhood that we hold dear. I have personally witnessed this type of renter from my home, uh, not in this house, obviously, but, um, there are close-by short-term rentals that have destroyed the fabric of this community and violated noise ordinances, and also have portable fire pits in the driveway, searching for things to burn, leaving permanent marks from the fire, also spray-painting items on the driveway, or, excuse me, on the sidewalk, and the owners have no clue. To approve this request is a gross lack of consideration of residents, will affect traffic flow, environmental concerns, and the like. If you allow this to proceed, please know that the great webs, website and three-one-one do not provide onsite management like is required at hotels in the resort area. Onsite management monitors and enforces occupancy restrictions, parking limits, and noise monitoring and control. Why should our local police be burdened with these management duties? Additionally, if police must be called, the permit should be rescinded until the owner formally submits a viable, actionable issue remediation strategy to us, the neighbors. Living sho, living next to a short-term rental like this is difficult due to having new people in and out all the time, partying right next to our bedroom window. Makes for unnecessary stressful situations with homes so close together as they are here at the Beach. Hotels do not belong in neighborhoods, especially non-supervised hotels. And what further explanation is needed after the nonsense that went on at fifty-five oh eight Holly a while back? Parking, parties, gunshots, injuries, lots of people staying in one residence with no place for them to park. You don't want it in your neighborhood, we do not want it in ours. This is not a resort area, it's a residential neighborhood adjacent to a resort area, and none of us signed up for this. Please think of the many unintended consequences that may not have been fully considered, and please deny this request. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Question?
You had mentioned, you, can you point on that map, or just, not point, just tell me, I can kind of get the bearing. Where, where's your residence?
The word fourteenth or the number fourteen?
Uh-huh.
That's my driveway, right there.
Okay, so you're across the street?
Yep, that's my bedroom, right where the dot is.
Okay, 'cause you said that there were, you made a statement that the noise would be next to your bedroom window?
That's, could you put that dot back where you had it a second ago? Right there's my bedroom window, so I look directly down on it. I have a three-story, and this is a single-story.
Okay.
Actually has a little loft in it.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any issues across the street, across Cypress? Have you ever had any issues with the, with the, over there?
I've had issues, I don't know who has the pointer, but, hmm, could someone point at, at the house again where they just did? Now moved to the right, to the right across the street, and the next house right behind that, that's a short-term rental, and that's where we've had issues from that house, which is three houses away. Also, a conditional use permit was just granted to, uh, another house right there on Cypress, which is not on the map because the property, the property that's under construction there on the map is now short-term rental.
Have you dialed, called three-one-one?
No, sir. Hasn't been rented yet.
I'm sorry?
It's brand-new and has not been rented yet.
No, I mean, any of those?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Burdon?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had more of that gentleman. I had a question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see you here, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sir.
Can you, uh, you may be repeating something, I don't, uh, where, what specific problems did you have with the other short-term rentals close by?
I walk my dog, and we, our family walks, and, and just the marks on the street from people burning, literally, they bring little portable fires. And so, you know, they think they're coming to the Beach, they bring a little fire pit, and they'll burn it in the driveway, whether it's on the website that you can't have it or not, they don't care. And the owners don't know, because they'll do this out on the sidewalk. I've seen people painting, like, of their bicycle or some, they're painting stuff, and the marks are there forever. And also noise and parking.
What, what specifically about parking? What, what, what it was?
Parking on the street. Just, it, it, you know, prohibits movement on the street. The Cypress is fine, but Fourteenth Street is very tight.
So were these, uh, you, you probably don't know whether the vehicles parking were people who were renting the house or whether they were guests, do you?
You don't know. You don't know if they're just visiting the, the house or not. But, I mean, you see them going into the houses, so, into the rentals, and you see the tags from how to stay, of course.
How long have those short-term rentals been in?
That one has been there since I've lived here, which is only a year and a half, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I appreciate the gentleman's, uh, passion, the, um, but to set the record straight, this little beach bungalow is not a mini hotel. And my client, Katie Denton, uh, spoke to the owners, owners of the two properties with the four units that surround her, not the tenant occupants of those units, and I'm pretty certain that's what I stated in my presentation. Katie'd be more than happy to, um, speak to Mr. Harrison and show him, um, what she does and, um, make herself available, uh, if there are ever any problems with this. But this is not a mini hotel. This will not be a party venue, and I think anybody looking at that house, looking at it online, isn't gonna say, oh, wow, there's a good place to have a, you know, a big party. It's, uh, far, far, far from it, um, in my, my opinion. And, you know, she's a excellent manager of these, has great experience in doing so, she's not absentee. So it won't be an issue. Mr. Harrison is a, is residing in, you know, a tear-down, redevelop, you know, increased-density scenario across the street, which is great, great for the city, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. But if we're gonna, if we're going to be able to maintain a little bit of the old character of, um, Virginia Beach, this is one of those opportunities to see if that, um, opportunity can be, um, can work. And as you all know, um, these are for five years. And as you all know, these are for five years, and I'm certain if there are violations, it won't be renewed, and it could be terminated. The City Council has the ability to pull these use permits, so I think it, this is a classic example of where, you know, the, the generalization, the, you know, just, they're all bad, we all know that that's not the case. We know absolutely 100% that it's not the case. And citing the circumstances that may exist in, on a couple of instances, those same circumstances can happen and do happen on properties that are not short-term rentals, and we all know that. So I don't think there's, this is a gamble or a roll of the dice at all on this piece of property. I think the, I think everyone will be very pleased with the outcome, and you've got someone who is deeply rooted in this community, who's gonna do this property justice, that's the, that's the reason why we're, we're up here. I haven't been up here on short-term rentals, other than there's just a, you know, handful over the course of the existence of short-term rentals, and most of those were redeveloping properties. But I think this is a fantastic circumstance where it's worth giving Ms. Denton an opportunity to demonstrate how to do this right, and again, to, to preserve this beautiful little cottage. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Yeah. Mr. Burdon, you, you mentioned there would be improvements, are those exterior improvements?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly, not, she's not gonna tear it down or build anything new, just, you know, renovate and upgrade the exterior appearance.
Is the intent to keep the screen of the shrubs that are there?
Yes.
Specifically on Fourteenth Street?
Yes. If they need to be trimmed, but to keep them there.
Manicured, but still kept?
Yes, absolutely, that's, that's the charm of the piece of property.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you. No more speakers? All right, we'll close it and open it up for discussion. Who wants to go first? Dr. Akres, or you want somebody else to go first this time?
Yeah, let me hear some comments, you know, I'm on the fence, I know where I'm leaning to, but just want to hear what you guys have to say.
Mr. Cost.
Well, I, I kind of never like to penalize someone at the beginning, before they've even started, based on what we might believe might be a problem, so I'm going to support it.
Okay. Mr. Edman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm torn on this one, I was even torn on the one before, where it's back in the neighborhood. It, so, it, yeah, it, it's a balancing act between, you know, the tranquility of a neighborhood, the, you know, the, and this is an ordinance that allows for short-term rental. Is this a good candidate for it? Probably so, for reasons that Mr. Burdon noted, in terms, it's a kind of a unique piece of property. It's on the corner, pretty well exposed if there's problems. So on balance, I, I'd probably have to support it.
Okay. Anyone else? Jack?
Well? Just, you know, you know, I like to be consistent, you know, in how we, how we look at this, and I think that's important, you know, across, you know, whatever we do. You know, we've denied two, it looks like we've denied two, one on Fourteenth, one on Thirteenth, approximately the same, almost the same distance from each other to this property. And, but we've also approved, or there's been approval, of short-term rentals, you know, in the adjacent corner, and fortunately, those are, you know, that's the area that Mr. Harrison was, was complaining, or, you know, had, had, you know, identifiable, you know, specific complaints, complaints about. One on one corner, one on the other corner, actually, three on, you, on the Fourteenth and Cypress Avenue corner, and then this one on the other, other corner. I don't know, it's, it's a tough stuff for me, we've, there, there are those that are nearby, and then those that, that have been approved, and those that are nearby that have been, been denied. So I'm still, I'm, I'm on the fence, still, this one.
Mr. Horsley?
I, I support it, because this is, this is kind of the old beach atmos, cuisine, or whatever you want to call it, I mean, it looks like the old beach, and I think that's what some of the folks are looking for. And it's not a, not somebody that's purchased a piece of property and gone and tear it down and try to increase its size, obviously get more bedrooms and have more people. I think it's somebody just trying to provide a, the beach experience to, to people who may, may desire that, that, that type of experience. So I'm, as many of you know, I'm not a big fan of short-term rentals anyhow, but we, I mean, it meets all of our criteria, so I would, I would, I'm going to support the application.
Mr. Chairman, what, what was the use of the property, or what is it now? Did anybody say that? I mean, how has it been used?
Mr. Miller, there.
Is it a rental?
Is it a rental? No, it's not a rental now, because it has it on our thing here, currently advertised, it's not advertised, it's never been known for rental, and it's still not registered.
Okay, now, I'm not talking about a short-term rental, I'm just talking about a rental.
Thirty, thirty, like a, a year rental?
Yeah.
A year rental?
A six-month rental, a year rental?
They just bought the piece.
What's been the prior use?
As, as I stated, Mr. Edman, Ms. Denton has just bought the property within the last 60 days. It was a rental, it was not a short-term rental, but it has been a rental.
Okay. For how long?
Number of years, I, I don't know that you know.
Do they know?
No, the previous owner had, had owned the property for a fair amount of time, I'd want to say close to 10 years, and it was a rental when, when Ms. Denton bought it.
Thank you.
First of all?
George? The, the parking, you know, we may make this one stand out a little bit more than others, is that it does have, you know, there, it shows, you know, two spaces that are appropriate for this, I believe it's two-bedroom, number of bedrooms, three, so they need, they need three, three parking spaces, but it looks like there's opportunities even, you know, within them, in the garage for additional space, and maybe, you know, possibly even a greater, greater amount of parking right there in the, in the driveway, so. So it does have that, that benefit, that they would have additional space for parking above and beyond what's required.
All right. Mr. Akres?
All right, well, thank you, and I know most of y'all know how I feel about short-term rentals, and the biggest concern I always have is, and this is there for those that are also applying, is management. I, I weigh a lot on management, I don't know how we can tell if we're going to get management at a level that's going to keep it in harmony with the neighbors, but from what I just heard, she's experienced, I like the layout, I like the parking, I like the screening, it's been offered that some, some improvements are going to be done with the property, and I'm pretty much confident that this one might be less intrusive than what we've seen and heard of, so I'm going to make a recommendation for approval.
All right. Recommendation for approval, about a second?
Second.
Second, recommendation on Mr. Akres for approval, Mr. Horsley, second.
Mr. Akres?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent, Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent, Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent, Ms. Oliver is absent, Mr. Redmond is absent. Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of six in favor, zero against, agenda item number 29 has been recommended for approval. Our last item for the day is agenda item number 30, Andrew Lynn, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental on property located at 4441 Ocean View Avenue, Unit B, in the Bayside District. And Mr. Chair, we have the applicant online via WebEx.
Okay.
Andrew Lynn, if you would wait two to three seconds, state, then state your name, and please begin your comments.
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Lynn, I'm representing the property owner Lynn Family Trust. We got a duplex, an over-under duplex, three-unit upstairs, three-unit downstairs, that we're applying for a short-term rental. We currently have a long-term tenant on a two-year lease for the upstairs unit, there are no plans to make that a short-term rental, it is only the downstairs unit that we are applying for this permit for at this time. That, that's all.
Question, maybe, I have a question for you, sir. Are you living in the upstairs one and applying for the short-term rental on the downstairs?
Negative, sir, we're, we're actually, it, no, we are not living in the upstairs unit.
Stairs. Now, who lives in the upstairs part of the house? It doesn't go, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excuse me, sir, who lives upstairs in the house now?
It is a two-year, it's a two-year lease with a tenant that we, we have a property manager that rents that out for us.
So the person upstairs is going to be your property manager?
Negative, sir, we have a off-site property manager, and the upstairs unit is a, is a tenant that I think just signed a lease maybe a couple months ago, and it's a 24-month lease. She, she has nothing to do with the short-term rental.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Jack? Did, so, did we got, did we get it straight, or is it straight? So downstairs is just, there's one unit upstairs, one unit downstairs? Is that correct? Yep, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, sir. Speakers?
Yes, sir, we have several speakers. Mr. Old to be followed by Joe Overfleet, and then Danny Blevins. Oh, sorry.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Tajman Old. I have a two-property on 4436 Ocean View Avenue, almost 25 years. I am against it, people buying property next to you, renting for the short-term or bed and breakfast. I don't think so is fair. Lot of houses over there, now far away from the my condos, almost a million dollars or half a million dollars, you renting those property for $1,000 a week or the $500 a What, you know, do you prove it that? I mean, I don't think so is fair. I am against it.
Okay. And where, do, do you, do you live on Ocean View Avenue also?
No, sir, I live in Cypress.
Okay.
But my condo's on the Ocean View Avenue in Virginia Beach.
Okay. Do you, so, do you live in that condo on Ocean View Avenue?
No, sir, I rent it. I rent it. Lady lived in there almost 15 years, and she was in the school this week, and then I have a nurse living there, you know, the operation room nurse, almost three years.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Joe Overfelt, and then Danny, and then Danny Blevins?
Gentlemen, thank you for listening to us.
Welcome, sir.
I live at...
Please state your name for the record, please?
My name is Joe Overfelt. I was, lived in this Virginia Beach or Prince of Anne County all my life, born and raised and bred in Chesapeake Beach. I live in a, on Lee Avenue, 4425 Lee, that's got seven houses on it that are over a million dollars. And what the problem we have with all of the Airbnbs is that the size of our streets will not accommodate the new influx that Airbnbs or BnBs period will create. Plus, as one of them said a minute ago, you get people who like to party in these houses. We have a Airbnb across the street from us right now that we will be fighting pretty soon, that had a party and had 50, 50 cars on Lee Avenue. Lee Avenue's not much bigger than where you're sitting, sir. And I don't think probably any of y'all live close to a Airbnb to appreciate the problems that they have created, more than just street parking. I thank you for your time, I hope you see it our way, it's, there're going to be more of them coming up, so you go have your hands full, gentlemen.
Thank, any questions? Thank you, sir. Oh, please.
Um, it's, and I understand you live on Lee Avenue, but where, where in terms of this property, do you?
The property is across Pleasure House, not Pleasure House, Lookout Road.
So you live on the south side?
Yes, sir.
On the other side?
I live on Lake Joyce.
Yep.
If I can make it more clear for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Question, please. Go, Mr. Edman.
And it looks like from a map we have on our materials that there's two registered short-term rentals, one might be across the street from you, or almost across the street.
It is.
And others on the corner of Lookout Road and Lee Avenue.
Yes, sir.
And one of those, you had a problem with the?
Yes, sir, a, a, a bad problem.
Mm-hmm. And how long have they been, those two properties have?
The one across the street from me, the gentleman died about a year and a half ago, and his stepson took it over. And nice, nice young man, but they don't care, they rented out, was listed an Airbnb as a party house, and that's when we had the 50 cars, and police, fire trucks, or nothing could get down the street. And that, therein lies your problem, one of your problems. And that, and Airbnb rentals, or, or weekly rentals, do not care if they tear up a house. And, and people are going to learn that eventually, but it's going to take some help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Horsley?
When you had that problem with the 50 cars, did you call the police?
Absolutely.
Did you get any?
Response on it?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, two ro, two cars rode down the street and kept going. And you could smell the dope, and you could smell the liquor.
So?
I, I built a million-dollar house on Lee Avenue. Not, not braggadocious, but it, that's what it cost me.
So that's what I'm trying to find out, because we tell people when they have a problem to call the, the authorities, and I want to make sure that, that when they call the authorities, that they are getting some action, is what I, I guess.
I don't think the police department, with what's going on all across this country right now, have time to do a lot of that. They're worried about other things. I think it would be helpful to have a, a group set up to go, visit these problems. And I know you say that, was it 311?
Mm-hmm.
I, I haven't called them, because we didn't even have one when I first started with that.
Well, that's, that's good information for us to know, because that's, that's one thing we tell people, if you have a problem, you know, you call 311. So we want to make sure that, that when they do have a problem, we, we need to, we need to be aware of that, because we don't want to keep, keep giving people information that's, that's not getting results, I guess, the best way.
That 311 phone, is it active 24/7, or is it active just in the eight hours?
24/7.
24/7 is I am.
And will they answer the problems quickly?
They are, they're charged with providing, sir, they're, they're charged with trying to provide us the information so that we can go inspect it as well as, but if there is a life-safety issue or concern like overcrowding, that's the one that you need to contact the, the police.
311?
No, you need to contact the police if there's a concern for...
Well, I did.
Okay.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I guess a point of clarification, does he need to contact both in order, because you, you don't get the complaint from 911, you get the complaint from 311, right?
We, we are currently in the process of making sure we get all the complaints, whether they call 911 or 311 at this point.
Okay.
So whichever one he contacts, we'll get that information.
That's going to put a lot of burden on people, I tell you that.
We, we fully understand, but they were charged to trying to figure...
We fully understand, but they were charged to trying to figure it out, so.
Thank you, sir.
I'm totally against it, so thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Danny Blevins?
Welcome, sir.
Yes, members of Planning Commission, my name is Danny Blevins. I reside at forty-six twenty-two Lauderdale Avenue in Chesapeake Beach. I'm a member of the Civic League. I'd like to say one thing. Joe, the number you call is not 3-1-1. It's 385-3111. So that's very confusing.
If you have a cell phone, you just dial 3-1-1 and it goes right straight.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well.
Yep. I've done it.
Thanks for that clarification. I am opposed to the short-term rental conditional use permit application at 4441 Ocean View Avenue, Unit B, for the following reasons. Bear with me. I need to read this to get through this in my four, three minutes. For the following reasons. Unverifiable, unenforceable, and unworkable use permit conditions. Condition four requires the number of people participating in an event at the STR be limited to two times the number of bedrooms. The number of people present at an event within an STR cannot be verified, and if an event occurs that is an obvious violation of the condition, there is no enforcement action that can be taken. Condition five requires that the name and telephone number of responsible persons associated with the STR be provided with an unspecified entity, person, or agency, provided to an unspecified entity, person, or agency. That entity, person, or agency is supposed to be able to contact the responsible party so the responsible party can correct the conditions within thirty minutes. This conditional use permit condition is not a solution should a party with a large number of people occur via social media or text chain. If I live near the STR and chaos breaks out next door or down the street, who do I call to contact the responsible party? And how effective will that responsible party be, especially if a physical response to the STR is not required? This is a condition, this condition is unworkable. Condition fourteen requires no outdoor amplified sound between 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. This condition is not enforceable. The police will, cannot enforce the noise ordinances that I think has been thrown out in the past. Judges have said you got to have decibel meters. You just can't enforce it. Condition fifteen limits the number of people on the property between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. to two individuals per bedroom. This conditional use permit condition is not verifiable or enforceable. The staff report, item two, the staff report states that parking requirements are met with the three parking spaces for Unit B at the rear of the building and parking for Unit A at the front of the building. Unit A requires.
Sir, thank you for your comments. Any questions for speaker? Thank you.
Unit A does not have parking. It's all off-site. It does not have sufficient parking.
Thank you.
Daryl Stubbs?
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Daryl Stubbs, a very long-term resident of Chesapeake Beach, some thirty-three years. And I'm here representing the Chesapeake Beach Civic League to strongly oppose short-term rentals in Chesapeake Beach. Dan Blevins presented some detailed objections to this particular short-term rental. I will present the Civic League's general position on our objections to short-term rentals in our neighborhood. These objections are outlined in a letter from current Civic League President, Mr. TJ Morgan, dated May twentieth, 2021. Members of the Commission have received a copy of this letter. Short-term rentals, or many hotels, as Mr. Morgan termed them in his letter, present a situation where perfect strangers could come into our community on a regular basis and degrade much of the fabric of our neighborhood. The definition of neighborhood is a district, especially one forming a community within a city or town. Neighborhoods make our lives safer, happier, and more fun. Folks in a neighborhood tend to have more peace of mind. They often share common values. Chicks Beach, by this definition, is a neighborhood where we know and look out for our neighbors and have close associations. We participate in neighborhood activities like Civic League organized family picnics, 5K runs, golf cart parades, and antique auto shows. Actually, we have an antique car show coming up on June twentieth at the Chicks Beach Shopping Center. Also, we have a Neighborhood Watch that has helped our neighborhood become one of the safest crime-free communities in the city. I remember one of our third precinct liaison police officers to the Civic League some years ago said that police officers new to the department were sent to Chicks Beach to get their feet wet since not much went on there. With the proliferation of short-term rentals, that may not be the case in the future. I believe Dan mentioned the shootout we had at an illegal short-term rental just a few blocks from where he and I live. Is this an example of what the neighborhood could become? My extended family loves it here primarily for the sense of community and friendliness of the residents. It's a neighborhood. It's not a resort. It's not a tourist area. Please don't allow the fabric of our neighborhood to be diminished. Oppose this application. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? No questions. Okay, thank you, sir.
Our last speaker is Carol Starbuck. No more speakers, sir.
The applicant wanted to come back. Does the applicant have anything else to say? She's still online?
Yes, Mr. Lynn is still online.
Mr. Lynn, do you have anything you'd like to add, please?
Yes, I do have a few comments. I appreciate everybody's concerns about the short-term rental. You know, I do want to, you know, I mentioned that we have spent close to over fifty thousand dollars improving the property, improving the parking, crush and run non-permeable parking spaces, improve the parking spaces in the back so that the guests would actually stay in the back and not park in the front. The long-term tenant upstairs would park in the front, and we have no intention of ever short-termining the upstairs unit. We have a very professional property management team that manages our short-term rental, TESRAC property management. There's a very large sign at the very front of the building that shows the number to call them. You can see on the far-left side on that picture on the left. They are actually very responsive. We do have cameras that monitor, you know, the parking spots, all the entrances, the back parking spots, so that we know who is and who is not coming. If there are unauthorized vehicles there, we actually will contact local authorities to make sure that, you know, only the authorized guests are there. We specifically asked for license plates, make a model of cars, and make sure no one is parking unauthorized there. And obviously, with the cameras, we can easily monitor for noise and also to see if there's more guests than actually authorized. I think I addressed all the issues. So the upstairs unit, which is the long-term rental, parks in the front, and then the short-term rental units park their vehicles in the back. So we've tried to, you know, I mean, it would have been great to have short-term rental both the upstairs and the downstairs, but in respect to the community, we felt that just renting out the downstairs would minimize the impact and actually leave a long-term tenant at our property there. So we are trying to respect the needs of the community and their requests. That's all.
Mr. Lynn? Please. Yeah. Are you still there? Is that your manager?
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you for taking me off. The property manager is a company called TESRAC Property Management Company. They manage a, I think they have well over sixty or seventy short-term rentals throughout Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and they run a very professional service. If there's any issues at all, they will have somebody out there within fifteen to twenty minutes to handle any leaks or any maintenance issues or any noise or guest issues.
Any other questions? No questions? All right, thank you, sir. No more speakers? All right, we will close this and open it up for discussion. Let's go first. Go ahead, Don.
I'll go first. You know, the conditional use permit was put in there so the neighbors would get the opportunity to know what's taking place in the neighborhood. And the neighbors have spoken today, and I, you know, I'm going to side with the neighbors today. I'm not going to support this application.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Jack.
You know, I agree with Don. I think that it's a pretty concerted response to, and, you know, I would say fairly large. I wouldn't say, you know, super large, but you know, there is quite a bit of opposition in the community, you know, for this, against this application. So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to oppose it as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Can we get a motion? Mr. Edman?
I have a comment. I mean, if you look at the map, there's a, we got a lot of short-term rentals in this vicinity. And we've. I'm going to go with Don's comment. It's just, I don't know, just don't feel comfortable with this situation, this particular property, parking situation. It seems a little odd, and I'm not sure that it'll be respected by renters. So I'm going to, I'll make a motion to deny it.
I'll second.
A motion for denial by Mr. Edman and a second by Mr. Horsley?
I might make a comment, you know. You know, we, like I said a while ago, we tell our people when they come, if you have a problem, call 3-1-1 or whatever. And, you know, we go, maybe we're overloading a system that can't handle all these calls or can't respond to all this stuff. I mean, so I think we're going to have to, I don't know what council is going to decide next week, but that may fix the whole problem. I just think that it's, you know, we can't continue to overload a system that's having trouble now is the way I feel about it. And these neighbors have spoken and appeared, some of the people that have spoken today said they didn't call. But these people said they called and asked for help, and it doesn't sound like they got a whole lot. So that's kind of, that's kind of part of the reason I'm going this direction. I think they probably meet a lot of the other criteria here, but I can't see overloading a system that appears to me may be already overloaded, so.
Okay, thank you. Ready for the vote?
Yes. Motion is for denial. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Mr. Edman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein is absent. Ms. Oliver is absent. Mr. Redmond is absent. Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of six in favor, zero against, Agenda Item Number Thirty has been recommended for denial.
Thank you. Before we leave here, real quick, Kevin, I want to say thank you very much for everything you've done for me. I know you've helped me out in the past, so good luck in the future. Hope things work for you. We'll always be here. All right, thank you very much. Gentlemen in the back, thank you all for being here. Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. All right, any new business, old business? We are adjourned.